The same principles that you use, that you used to call in the old days engineering by design, that nowadays we call inquiry, which is we start with a problem, you expect students to engage in discourse to be able to solve the problem, and then we talk about how did you get there. So there's not one way to solve a problem, it's how, what way did you use to get to that answer? And explain to me how you got there. So the difference is that you're looking at conceptual math versus computational math. The difficulty is, we learned concept math, we learned to be teachers of concept math. I used to always say as a principal, that we wanted to teach math like we taught ELA or social studies, and only those that understood that math had to be taught the science way were very successful math teachers. So what, how are we doing to be able to support this? This entire year, you've heard about the I Make It, which is the letters or the science of reading and mathematics, is really getting adults into thinking ways that I can teach math differently. And this program, the teachers felt that piloted it, felt that this program, this curriculum helped them do the transition of calculation math to conceptual math. Next slide, please. One piece that we also recognize is not only the adults have to be thinking of teaching math differently, is the parents. How do we have parents support us at mathematics at home? And this curricular package really provided some excellent family resources, that again, we had the Parent Center Engagement Group help us here, or Parent Center, and they helped us also formulate some of the questions and the data that we collected on the survey. And one of the pieces that they found and that they spoke to us is, we can read to our kids every day at night, but now we have ideas of how we can do mathematics every day at night that's not computational mathematics, right? It's beyond that. Games that we can play, really trying to figure things out using different mathematics pieces. Next, please. So this is the total cost of the curriculum adoption. And we have 15 schools that are going to begin Phase One. You probably will say to me, well, why aren't we using all the schools? Well, we've learned from our past mistakes. So it's also looking at trend data. It was also saying, what were the gaps and the mistakes and the mishaps that we did? And what we learned was, and we initially were just going to start with 10, but we had 15 very insistent principals that they wanted to be part of the pilot. So we have 15 schools participating, and our goal for next year is to continue to invite those, that staff from the school that's not adopting it yet, to be part of professional development, but to truly create model classrooms, learn from this, so that, and then those 15 schools become the resource centers and the turnkey pieces and the learning curve that we need for the next 10 additional elementary schools. We truly believe that this model of doing it right in a smaller scale, but also providing model classrooms, so that those other schools that later adopt it can visit each other's classrooms is ideal. In the year, Year One, we're going to shift a little bit our thinking to say that teacher leaders, classroom teachers are the leaders of math, and they're the ones that are going to be providing these model classrooms and inviting other colleagues to come to their classrooms. When we, as teachers, see each other teach, we get ideas. And we want this to be a sharing protocol. Next slide, please. And that's it for mathematics. Do you want me to keep going and then we just gather questions later?
No, I actually think we should break this down.
Okay.
Just to make sure that, you know, we do this efficiently. And so I'll go down the line, starting with, before I go to Commissioner Griffin, I also want to recognize that we have Commissioner LeBron and our parent rep on Monica Graham online, and so I'll go to them also, but I'll start off with Commissioner Griffin.
Thank you, Dr. Ramos, for your overview on the iReady curriculum, but I have concerns about iReady and the curriculum. And I guess because as we vote on things, I need to have more than just the one thing that I'm looking at to compare it to. There's been a lot of complaints about iReady. There's a lack of engagement with the children, it causes anxiety, different issues with the iReady curriculum. So I have a problem with how we actually are, how we have to vote on things that we don't even have enough information, enough information on, and to compare it to other curriculums. So do you have something else that we can compare this to, so that when we can weigh it out? Because voting on something and giving it to our students at this point, and not having a full range of understanding of what's going to happen with it, is very concerning to me. So we need to have the top three, and then we need to go through them as a board and look at them, so we know that we are giving our children what they need to be successful.
Thank you. Thank you. And I'll also say that there were opportunities for us to engage with the family process. I did attend. I also attended at the parent university at Little Wilson, so I was able to see those things. But I think we do have to have discussions as far as, you know, because I see for ELA, you gave the three curriculums, or the four curriculums that were available, but for math, you're only showing the one that was chosen. Were there other contestants?
So, yep, I did mention Amplify, Curriculum Associates, Imagine Learning, and McGraw-Hill. The two pilots were between Imagine Learning and Curriculum Associates. And I can share with you the rubric that was used, I can share with you the different pieces that each one had, I can more than sure share that with you.
Yes, and just to be clear, I have the books at home, so I actually went through them. So it's concerning to me, I don't know who else has went through them on the dais, but I went through them. It would be, it would behoove us as board member, or for me, I'll say for I, I would prefer us having a crash course in them, everybody sitting with us and saying, hey, this is what we think, this is the comparisons, instead of coming in here, coming in on May 22nd and have to approve something that we really don't understand. So I think that when you have them lined up, and you give us the differences in the data that supports that, and shows that overall, including with the suburban and urban, we are online and we are not outdated by using iReady, that's what I would feel comfortable with as a commissioner, and voting on something for our children. I don't believe that we've done that collectively and in the past, so I think that we should start doing that to ensure that we're voting on something that is going to move the needle in this district.
Thank you, Commissioner. Doctor Strickland?
Commissioner Griffin, just a few quick points. This is all guided by the RFP process, where the educational experts look and analyze the curriculum and determine which one is the best one that we think the district should go and move forward with. I also want to just remind you with the student outcomes focused governance, this is, this is one of the inputs in terms of curriculum. Curriculum is an input, and this is under the direction of the superintendent, and you will have the opportunity to actually review this information. And I don't want you to, sorry?
That's not what I'm saying, though.
Just a moment.
I want to be clear, though.
Just a moment.
We can let people finish their sentences.
I also want to not misconstrue iReady, the diagnostic, versus now we're talking about a curriculum.
And I'm not doing that. What I'm asking for, and I think I made it very clear to the listening public, is that I want to see the comparisons of other curriculums that we have. I want to see that information, iReady, with the other ones that we have, that they put on display at the conversation.
Thank you.
So that if you can answer me, Dr. Ramos, that's all I'm asking for.
I'm chairing this meeting. We're going to move on to Commissioner Patterson. Commissioner Patterson? The superintendent answered your question, Commissioner. Commissioner Patterson? Commissioner Simmons?
Thank you, Dr. Ramos, for where you are with the presentation. Obviously, different colleagues have, you know, different ideas and different questions and things like that. You know, for me, I've worked with you since 2014, so I'm going to personally, free speaking for myself, trust the information that you're bringing forward. So I really have no questions for you at this point in time, so thank you.
Thank you. President Simmons?
Thank you, Commissioner Santiago. Thank you for your presentation, Dr. Ramos. First, I want to acknowledge that this is a process that was expected to happen over a period of time, and historically, I don't know how often it's happened, so I want to really acknowledge that Interns Superintendent Strickland brought this before us, so that we could really take a deep dive and understand what the process looks like. I also hope to get in front of the materials, that I know I saw the communications, that we have an opportunity to look through the materials. And I also further recognize that the experts will guide us with any questions we may have. The different opportunities to differentiate in the classroom, I loved what I heard as far as the different ways of learning and the approach that teachers or educators can take. I do wonder around the parental piece. There was a piece that I like to see that the families will also have the opportunity to be engaged. And is there potentially, is that going to expand beyond the classroom, or is there partnership with OPE or our family community engagement?
Yes, there is a partnership. In our forums that we had, we had all vendors presenting differences and similarities of curriculum. So I just want to mention that we did provide that opportunity, so people would see them even before a selection was made.
Nice, wonderful.
And we also had for the mathematics 17 community members, inclusive of parents that participated in the final piece.
And this is a research-based curriculum?
Yes, it is.
Yes, awesome, awesome. So...
I'm in a meeting, sorry, what's up?
Commissioner LeBron, if you could, if you can mute?
Because I think when we were learning about the science of reading, there was a question posed around research-based, but then I was told, we also should ask about the outcomes for the curriculum. So can you just expound a little bit on the outcomes you've seen with this curriculum and use maybe in other districts or what have you?
We have, so in order for us to be able to make any recommendation, we have to be able to say that we've done our due diligence as to how it matches New York State, as well as ed studies and research. And so we did do that due diligence there. It completely aligns to the next generation standards, and we did not, there were other RFPs, we did not pick any of those RFPs that didn't align with New York State standards, next generation standards, you know? These companies are international, right? And they may say it aligns the standards, but, and then we have to dig in deeper to say if it aligns the next generation standards, right? And so we know that there's full alignment. We also know that it has green ratings across focus and coherence, rigor, mathematic practices and usability. We need that. We also know that there have been outside university, as well as research, that give different curriculum, different points, they were also in the green. If they weren't in the green, we weren't going there. And in addition to that, we applied the New York University scorecard on our own with the committee, and didn't just trust what they were saying we were doing.
Awesome, thank you.
It is, to go back to what you asked, it is program, problem-based, it is about discourse, it does have STEM in it, it has real-world application activities, it has also student bookshelf pieces where the kids can go and get more engaged. The same way we teach reading with decodables, and the kids can go to the baskets, they can go to the different parts to get engaged with mathematics, and it's huge on manipulatives. You're going to see the price for manipulatives is high.
Thank you, Dr. Ramos. Vice President Malloy?
Thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation, Dr. Ramos, and I, this looks fantastic in so many ways. I just used the QR code here to find some of those family resources, and I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Although I teach social studies, math is a mystery for me, and I know, dealing with my children as they went through Common Core and now the Next Gen, I find myself not able to help them. So I think that that family center and those resources are especially helpful. My question is, and you may have mentioned this, and if I missed it, I'm sorry, what are the plans for ongoing professional development? Do we have math coaches who will continue to provide any type of professional development? Or what is that going to look like?
So we have our instructional coaches, that right now are not either ELA or math, but an adult instructional coach that really talks about best practices, explicit instruction. They have been trained, they're going to be trained in the new curriculum, so that you understand it. But schools right now, the implementation plan is pretty rigorous. Schools are identifying teachers that are going to be part of training during the summer, administrators that would be part of training in the summer, and then we're going to have cohort meetings continuously, so that we are learning from each other and involving all the schools in it. Of course, there's a professional developmental plan for all teachers that are using it. Our goal is to begin in September, not wait until the end of the year, to create model classrooms of those people that are implementing it, so we can send other teachers to their classrooms and saying, wow, this person did really well with that, why did I struggle? We are going to be using pre-assessments from the curriculum and post-assessments, so that we can see how well formatively we're doing.
Fantastic, thank you so much, it looks great.
And I will also include that in the sharing our plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ramos. I do have a couple of questions, but I'll go up to our student rep, our parent rep first. Monica Graham, do you have any questions?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Thank you for that presentation, Dr. Ramos. I particularly enjoyed the parent or the family resource page, so that was exciting. I guess my only question would be, what are the languages that are offered for that particular section for families? Thank you.
So, the curriculum is offered in Spanish, as well as in English, so the bilingual classrooms will be accessing it. And then we have always the ability to be able to use our change of language that we have right now in the district, for the parents to be able to pose. Your last page, as well of the slide, will have a link that also takes you to curricular materials in both iReady as well as ELA, when the slide ends, and those are live links for you as well.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Commissioner LeBron?
Yes. So, I just have a few, I'm going to make two comments, but I do have a question that I actually want to officially put on the board question log, and I wrote it down, because I noticed the price points, and I just am curious what budget line this curriculum is going to be budgeted out for this year, and if we've thought about costs, you know, as we move forward and potential impact from P 2025. Not going to continue to say Project 2025, but you have can document it as Project 2025, because there are things coming down the pipeline from that. So my official question is, what budget line is that coming from, and if there are cuts, are there, have there already been conversations, or out of, we continue funding this contract and so forth? But I just want to point out the curriculum data review process, because that was a process that didn't exist previously, and over the years, based on feedback from different, both parents and board members, the administration eventually opened it up, so that board members could come and do a comparison. And I remember that there were a time when, like, all the commissioners used to come together to do it. They did that one year with one particular superintendent, and they opened it up. And I'll tell you, I think Commissioner Santiago was probably like the second commissioner I've ever heard actually going in person outside of other individuals over the years who did it, like previously Commissioner Shepard would attend for sure, and Commissioner Melanie Funchess. But I just want to highlight that, because this comes up every year, there's always curriculum conversations. That's a whole other conversation for this community to understand why we always constantly have curriculum conversations. But the fact when commissioners don't participate and then question things, I was confused tonight, thinking that there's even going to be a vote on this, but then realized, no, this is actually a process, and there is RFPs that guide this. And I want to thank Dr. Vickers for also highlighting and uplifting the fact that there are New York State standards that the curriculum has to be aligned to. Regardless of how we like it, feel about it, the standards have to be met, in particularly these new standards. And I just want to uplift Commissioner Santiago's point about coming in to review them. I was not aware that we were allowed to take them home, ever. That's never been my experience, I do want to point that out to the community. But when those periods and times are open, you are all also allowed, as parents, to come in and review those and give feedback as well. And so I hope that next time this comes around, we highlight it in advance, and we continue to highlight it throughout our meetings, to remind parents to come in, where to go, and what to do, how to review it, and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you.
We did dedicate a curriculum adoption line this year, for both ELA and mathematics. The academic plan requires us to do this in November, to let the superintendent know what are the upcoming curricular adoptions. We already have a plan for next year, and we will be engaging in social, in science, and K5 for regular ELA, and that commitment is also already in next year's budget.
Thank you. So what are the difference between, what's the difference between the model of the iReady diagnostic and the iReady that we're talking about here on this presentation?
So iReady, what you're looking at right now is a curriculum, right? So the diagnostic is just exactly that, an assessment, and if students aren't making there, you could think of it maybe like an intervention. If kids aren't getting there, and then what are the problems, or what are the things that I can do to try to improve my score? Think of it as when you were doing regions review, right? And you would go online and look at questions, and then they would say, no, that's not the answer, but you can study this to get there. The curriculum is a whole different scene, right? We're being proactive. These are the things you're going to need to know, and we're going to get there. And we have performance indicators in mathematics, right? That's the old term we used to use. Now you have expectations, and you have fluency in mathematics, and we know that standard and where we need to go, and how are we going to get there is the unpacking, and that's the work of providing a curriculum. A curriculum doesn't solve all the issues, and I'm going to say this right now, a curriculum has to be adaptive and flexible and guaranteed. Guarantee is that it's going to get you where you need to be, but adaptive means that no curriculum knows the gaps that our children have, that's the teacher and the professional. Ever since I started, I told you that I needed to be able to see that there was time for students to reflect, correct their mistakes, and move forward. If pacing doesn't allow a student to do that, we're in trouble, right? Because that's how we learn. We learn more from mistakes every day than what we do from what we do right. We will remember the mistakes over and over again, right, than what we do right. This curriculum provided the time for reflection, which for me was one of my biggest pieces. Where is the time that we're going to allow students to inquire and to get to where they need? And our students in elementary have those 90 minutes to be able to do this. So we will model it with times for those teachers.
Absolutely. And will board members still have access to the other competing curriculums before the vote happens, or?
We'll ensure, the two that we piloted, absolutely. We'll ensure that you do.
Okay, and?
I mean, I have a cheat sheet here, but I'll get everything from Inkaylin, you know her, she'll give you 15 pages, but she'll get everything.
But if we could do it for all of our commissioners?
Absolutely, absolutely.
That'd be great. That's the end of the questions for this section. You can continue on.
Okay, so we're going to do ELA. And so for ELA, as always, not only are we looking at 1D, but what are we going to ensure that every grade level has what they need to support career readiness? Again, it's not that we're not supporting college, but I always have said that we should always support career readiness, and those kids that decide to go to college just take four more years to get ready for a career. Next slide, please. Timeline with the next generations as well, I know you've seen this, but we had to learn to unpack and go back to looking at those next generation guidelines, and that's where we've been working a lot with our priority standards. Next slide, please. All right. So again, just like before, we had a scoring rubric for our RFP process, we had pilot teachers and students, surveys, and we also used our New York State University scorecard that we used. Next slide, please. I mean, we didn't deter from this. And then here, you can see the timeline of how we did this. So we were a little after mathematics in Phase One. Again, we included different parents, and we also had time for, in Phase Three, to include our community members and our parents as well. The next slide tells you exactly, now, high school, we use student voice in elementary, but the student voice was grades three through five. We asked them, you know, how did you like this, what did you like more? And we facilitated that conversation. Some of the kids did do it online, but we really wanted more information. Our high school students, though, it was fantastic. It was fantastic to see them say, I truly enjoy the engagement with this one. We did pilot, we had 303 pilot student surveys, as you saw, 26 teachers piloted the different programs that we had, and these were the schools that were we piloted at. Next slide, please. Here are, we wanted to highlight some of the pieces of what students said. These are some of the highlights of what our staff, as well as students, we reported. I mean, a kid is not going to talk about differentiation and scaffolding. I've said this all the time, we leave the grade level curriculum there. Scaffolding means, what are the ways that we continue to help students access that material and not provide a lower level material for the students, right? And so teachers felt that the curriculum that they chose had a stronger scaffolding piece, as well as audios and summary in different languages, as well as being able to, kids said that it felt that it was clear, helpful, and engaging. And next one, please. So they, out of the three that were piloted, they chose Study Sync, they felt that it extended time for kids to be able to do writing projects. Once again, writing is a reflective process, it's a process that you need students to have time, and this allowed that time to happen. There were instructional routines, there is a lot of building vocabulary and comprehension, which were very weakened in the district, and we're working really hard, especially with the professional development plan next year, and the curricular highlights and focuses has to be vocabulary development, K through 12. It provided novel choices with each unit, and that I loved, because not everybody is going to like the one novel that the teacher chose. It's not what we're, it's what is the topic that we can talk about regardless of what novel you choose. Another piece that happens when you have novel choices, is kids get interested in the novel that they didn't choose, and hopefully we will encourage more reading. And at the end, please. So the material review of the two chosen curriculum will be tomorrow and Thursday, and those are the times. We will make sure, I'll do an email now and after I finish my presentations, to ask both if you have anything else from the ELA, also to ask them, so that you have those materials. But these are live links, and you can see program overviews, and you can also see the different pieces that we have there. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Ramos. I did search up Study Sync, and it looks pretty good. I'm glad to see, it looks a little bit like college, it looks like it's preparing, you know, some of our students for college.
It has high interest. I think that's what the students told us, is that they kind of liked it, because it wasn't boring.
Yeah, and it's organized in the way and the process of it, it looks like some of that I definitely would have been interested in also. And I'm glad to also see that the students were able to do a survey, 303 students altogether, and so I'm glad to see that the student voice is being...
We worked very hard to make sure we had student voice this year. They're the ones that matter the most.
All right, thank you. I'll start off with Vice President Malloy.
Thank you. Thank you so much for this presentation. Looking forward to seeing the results from this curriculum, and I really enjoyed the fact that students were involved in this process, and the student choice component for what they're reading is especially interesting, especially as a parent to kids who don't always like what's being read in their classroom, and having that choice is really critical for engagement. So, thank you so much, no other questions.
Thank you. President Simmons?
Thank you. So like the, all the thoughts that went in, I was looking at the NYU, the culturally responsive, the scorecard, and checking that, I actually went to the site and kind of... and kind of pulled out some of those pieces, and you know, it brought me to a space where I'm thinking, how are we preparing our educators? We know that historically, our district has had lots of different curriculum. We even have a storehouse of, of different things. We often heard Commissioner Elliott even reference, the storehouse of books. So here we are with research, really great curriculum. Could you briefly just share how we're preparing and readying our educators to take this on and be excellent in the delivery or implementation?
Well, we've seen it this year with CKLA, right? There is the implementation dips that we need to pay attention and support, so for support is the number one thing, so that they don't abandon it, right? We also have to recognize, actually today, we were just in a meeting of what went well with CKLA, what didn't go well. How can we, how can we make sure that we are still aligning and supporting? And I think that's the key. As long as they feel their support, as long as we have teacher leaders in buildings, all buildings in addition to coaches, have ELA teacher leaders, those are going to be our anchors, right, as well as our administrators. But our anchors will be those teacher leaders. Teacher leaders leave once a month to meetings here with Jamie Bickham, who oversees coaches and teacher leaders, and she is also part of the group that has been looking at curriculum so that she could get involved in it. She was also on that panel with mathematics. I mean, she is now learning a lot more curriculum than she ever thought she would, right? Because we have to anchor and support. We don't wait until the end of the year to look at pieces. Actually, today with the Superintendent Strickland, we were looking at our professional development needs, and what is the time that we have during the year, and when are we going to do these things, right? Because we just can't let it happen without a calendar. We've created a cross, cross culture, across content, right, calendar, so that everything is in one place, and we continue to focus on our initiatives in TNL. There is an alternative curriculum. There's scaffolding. We don't use different curriculum for different children, right? We need to be able to say, this is our curriculum. This is what you're going to be expected to do when you graduate. How do we access that material?
Can I, can I add? Dr. Strickland?
Just, President Simmons, just a further add to what Dr. Ramos is saying, which she's done a phenomenal job leading this process with the student voice involvement, so on and so forth. One of the unique things about how I've come up in curriculum and instruction is that you don't do it all at once. So you heard Dr. Ramos talked about a cohort approach, and then what happens is you do it, that part, you do it very well, and then you bring on the next group of individuals. This also will allow for situations if we need professional development that has to happen during the day. We're not doing it to the entire district. We're only doing it to a specific amount of schools, and then the next year, we bring on people, and then you keep, you, you call it maintenance. So any new teachers to those new schools that may have missed it, they will have the opportunity to get it the next year, so on and so forth. So it's a, it's a really good plan, and I'm glad that they followed that, and I'm excited for what's, what's going to happen with both of these.
It sounds like a digestible approach. I, I love the cohort approach, but to also know that there's additional professional learning opportunities-
And we have a plan for the summer. We know summers are busy, but those that get ahead of us, and then that's our first cohort, right? Because then we have others that are still waiting in the ranks for the, for the PD.
Thank you. Commissioner Patterson?
Yes, I too like the cohort approach show. Thank you for that. Just to, and you might not be able to answer this, you may or might not, I should say. When it comes to homework, and, and again, this is from a parent, I'm just asking a question, and it deals with, is there a certain percent, or is there something as far as a, a policy that we've created, or something from school to school that relates or regards homework being sent home? And does this program that you're initiating involve a little bit more homework going home? So, I'm kind of, it's kind of a foreign area for me. I don't know who can answer that, but is there something that we have that tells teachers how much homework they can send home?
So you do have a policy that addresses classwork as well as works at home. I think the way that we want to look at this from our teaching and learning are, what are the tools that you're giving students to continue to be engaged, and then what are the opportunities to support that engagement, right? So that they're not getting frustrated as, as you might think, or so that we're not saying you've got three hours of homework for ELA and four hours of homework for mathematics. So you do have a policy that addresses many of those points. But from the curriculum and instruction point, ours is, how do we get kids doing more math and reading more with, with the engagement of the curriculum?
And that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah. So did I not answer? I'm sorry.
No, I think, I think the only thing I'd want to see is the policy itself.
Okay.
If we can put that in the question log? Okay, okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ramos, again for that, for the overview on, on the ELA portion. Again, my only concern is the comparisons of data with other, with other curriculums, and that's, that's what I like to see. I like documentation.
We'll get that for you.
Thank you very much. That's all I was asking before, so I do apologize if it came across confusing.
It's okay. There's a rubric, and we'll get the information from the rubric, and maybe you can see everything that the rubric asks, and you'll feel better about it.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
It's, it's an intensive process.
Right, right. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. I'm so used to you having the graphs, and you know, you had a lot of, you know, a lot of words this time and no, no graphs like you did before, so I'm used to seeing those breakdowns.
I know, but I was told 10 slides.
Right, okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Trying to, to adhere to your 10 slides.
Thank you. So we have one more presentation. I'm sorry. We're going to go to our parent rep, Monica Graham. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Dr. Ramos. I guess I'm going to echo what everyone else has said. I definitely appreciate you involving our students. They are the most important, and they are the ones that are going to be using this. So if we're not asking them, then we're not doing the right thing. So I am really proud of our scholars that you had over 300, and it goes to show that when we bring them to the table, they will deliver. So thank you so much for that. And you had the live link at the end, so I got my information, and I saw the different languages accessed in the presentation, so I'm good. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And, and just a reminder to the listening public, you can access every document that is being proposed today at Board Docs, RCSD. Commissioner, Dr. Strickland?
Oh, good conversations around homework. Commissioner Patterson, just wanted you to know that is guarded by Policy 4730, and there's actual timeframes that are recommended for specific grade levels, and that's in the regulations. However, you leave that to the schools to sort of consider if, you know, there needs to be an extension. You know, there's a lot of research that says homework isn't effective. We've, some of us feel that homework is effective, so it really is just, you know, it's sort of up to what that school learning community is all about. But it does lay it out for kindergarten, say in 15 minutes, primary, one, two, three, 20 to 30 minutes, junior high or high school, ninth, ninth through 12th grade, up to 150 minutes. That doesn't mean that things don't exceed those amounts, and those are recommendations.
Yeah, thank, thank you very much for responding to that, because it really answers that the, if that parent is watching, then they got the information directly from you too. So I appreciate that response. Thank you.
And, and please be reminded, extended days used by our students that sometimes struggle with doing homework at home, right? So we want them engaged in the curriculum, so what ways can we engage them? Doesn't have to necessarily be the traditional homework way. So that's the way we've kind of challenged ourselves in teaching and learning to say, well, if they're not doing that, let's think of something different.
Thank you very much, both of you.
Thank you. Commissioner LeBron?
Yeah, I just also want to point out for all listening parents that our board policies are publicly available as well on our website. And I actually am someone that encourages, don't just take our word for it or what you're hearing tonight from administration. Pull up that policy, read through it, so that you have a full comprehensive understanding of everything in it. Same with the executive orders, y'all. But I just want to point out, and, and I want to uplift, that, just a small concern, I love the cohort model as well. I love the rollout and the schedule that was shown in the previous presentation for the curriculum implementation and the cohort model with schools starting and schedules. My only concern, and it's because this is a real thing that actually unfortunately occurs and has occurred forever in this district, is when we have our transient families and students who move from one district, one school to another, and they're using two different sort of models of curriculum or, you know, information. So that's my only concern, that if we're going to be doing like a cohort model and switching this, that if you have, let's say, a third grader, because I do think that, that those transitional pieces for students, not just being transient, that has an impact as well on outcomes for education for students and families.
Absolutely.
But also the impact of moving from one school with one model into another, especially for like a second grader, third grader, mid-year, two or three times in a year, unfortunately for some of our families, and that's just the reality. So if we, and, and maybe this is something that can go into the board question log, Dr. Strickland, I'm not sure.
We have an answer. We have an answer.
I have an answer? Okay, I was going to say, maybe you know it, so we, we transfer from one to the other, but that's one thing, that's the only thing that like sort of-
So for elementary, we looked at zones, which helps us so much more, and we ensured that in each zone, there are multiple schools doing it, and we will work with placement to let them know, if this kid is leaving from this school, can you first try to find a seat in a school that's implementing the mathematics? We did think of that, and actually it was a family member that brought that up, a parent. And again, parent voices really count, and I want to thank our parents that sat. This was not an easy process, right? Because there are so many great things going on. For high school, the cohort really becomes professional development. We are going to have the new curriculum for nine, 10, 11. It will be available for 12. Many times, our 12th grade classes are elective, so those that are not electives will have it, but the cohort will be in the professional development piece. Because we don't have zone schools, we were scared of kids not being able to access, especially because when there's choice, and they don't have choice right now, they're not going to like that.
Thank you so much. I love that a parent brought that up, because yeah, it's my thought too. It's like as a mom, yeah. So I love that. And then I just want to thank you for all of it. You're wonderful. Just thank you. I, I know the lift that you've been doing for us behind the scenes in this district, and I just want to thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you to Dr. Ramos. Thank you to the students. Thank you to the parents, and thank you to everybody who had part to do with this selection process. I'm glad to see this process implemented. I believe last time when we had conversations about curriculum, that was my first question. What are, how are we getting input from our students about this? And so I'm glad to see that we're following that model and that process, and looking forward to that in the future. So we have another presentation from you again, so-
So we're pitching in for our colleagues, lots of conflicts, especially with kids moving out of college, right? If we can go, we can go ahead and go through quickly with this one. Of course, we have board goals. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. I'm more than sure you know by now the graduation requirements, but we always like to include this. Next goal, please. All right. So these are our current eighth graders. Right now, what are the percent of students passing this marking period, and the percentage number as well as percentage. We did it in content area, credit bearing classes, because some of our students in science could be in living or earth science. So instead of having multiple columns, we just wanted to let you know where they are right now. Ninth grader, same thing. So if you had, if you were accelerated in eighth grade and you took algebra, you could be sitting in geometry as a ninth grader, except you had some credits with you. Or you could be in living environment or earth science, and for some of our accelerated students, they could be in chemistry. So that is why you're seeing them by content and not by specific class. Social studies as well, and you can see right now the percent of students and the number of students that are passing this marking period, trying to accrue those five credits. Here you have the data by school, which is always what you want to see, and for current ninth graders, we split it up into the different marking periods so that you can see the fluctuation of those numbers and the percentage. You always ask me, so what are we doing about it? So this slide talks about, we still continue to have marking period recovery, which means that we use after-school breaks. I'll have an example for you as to what that looks like. Online credit recovery, which you always have time in a kid's schedule to be able to put in or have them also stay after school. Extended day programming. We have been holding Saturday schools, especially for students that still need, in addition to the 1,200 living environment minutes, now they have required investigations that if they don't pass that, they don't even pass the class. So there is a lot more labs that students in living environment need to have. We continue to look at their cohort tracking, and we've been adjusting student schedules even at this time, right? Because our goal is to be able to continue to support. Life happens, and sometimes we don't know. We have been for the last two weeks intensively looking at those summer learning recovery, our opportunity programs. We have redesigned some of the programs that came to you as to, this is our intent and projections for summer school, because we feel that we need some more support and some specific programming based on the data of our students. If they make it through June, that's great, but in case they don't, we need to be prepared to support them. We've looked at the priority of being 12th grade, those kids with five credits or less to be able to make graduation, August grads, and then we've continued to look at it. And we've taken the other end, the kids that are not reading on grade level, what's going on with them. And so we go to the next slide. Here are examples. So during April recess, we called it boot camp, you had at all city, 30 students complete courses. I mean, these are kids that had not been able to complete those courses, credit recovery, right? At Monroe High School, you had 200 students attend to do Regents Review. You had 30 students again be able to complete those courses that they were lagging, that could have been from first semester or last year, and you just are not doing the work that you need to do. And at Padilla High School, we wanted to include them. This is just a snapshot. It's not that it didn't happen anywhere else, but at Padilla High School, because we're seeing a lot of impact and differences, we wanted to highlight Padilla for you. And so they had 57 Regents Exam passed in January for them, which was, they worked hard, and I'm going to give that credit to Ed Miskadri, who was the interim principal there at that time, where they really co-horted those children and changed their schedules so that we could get them across in January. We've had since then, with after-school tutoring, 47 students complete courses, and 146 kids that were failing the marking period go back and recover class, those classes, so they're not failing anymore. So I know you always say to me, where's the data, and what do we see? And the money that we're giving out there, where do we see that this is happening? That is an example of, that we had going on. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Ramos, you're, you're on a, you're on a move. I remember when we used to get these presentations, and every time I would ask, so what's the plan forward? Like, what's going on? What are we doing? What are we going to do? Like, it's good to see the current data, but what are we going to do about it? And so I'm glad to see that there is examples on here and on this presentation for that.
We've been busy.
Is there, is there any questions from any of our board members? Commissioner Griffin?
It's not so, well, maybe it's a little bit of a question, but have you ever thought about with the Saturday schools, you know, the kids are all over different areas, having it central at different locations, like on the west side, have it at Wilson, on, you know, East, and then you have it at maybe Franklin, or, or, you know, difference, and even with the, with the elementary as well, to make it so that the kids have a central location for a Saturday class, instead of having a Saturday class at each individual school, if they're all teachers from the district? Have you ever thought about that?
So yes, and we do do that during breaks, and definitely during summer, right? Because during summer, we do, we do zones, right? What we find is these high school principals are working with each other- What we find is these high school principals are working with each other all the time, and they always will open their door. They say, hey, this kid lives in the west side, he doesn't have transportation to come to Monroe.
Right, right.
Can you take him at Wilson, or can you take him at another program? And the principals always open their doors to those incidences. The issue is, kids like to go to school with the teachers that they know, and like to be amongst the classmates that they have. And so even though they always know that the opportunities are there, you know, they always go, you know, the key is to find the teacher that the kids really are engaged with, to do that after-school and Saturday classes, and they come.
And this is one last thing. I know when I was going to school, I went to night school. Has that something, has that subject ever came up again? Or what is your, what is your take on?
So they have extended day right now, in some of our schools, you know, extended day might be different, creates, but we don't have anything in place for night school at this time, and it would have to be a program. Can't be an extension, because then you're going to get into contract pieces.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Vice President Malloy?
Yeah, thank you so much for this presentation. I particularly like the, I think it's slide number five, just the data on the ninth graders comparing the high schools. I would love to take a deeper dive into this, just to better understand how we end up with different results at different schools. And I know it might, it has a lot to do with placement, student demographics, family demographics, et cetera, but I would love to, to know, to highlight even, like what some of those schools, I'm looking at School Without Walls and our program at RIA, you know, with a hundred percent of kids on track, and then School Without Walls, similar populations, but almost a hundred percent on track. And are there opportunities for whatever's being done at those places to be shared with, with perhaps other schools? And I know it's comparing apples to oranges sometimes, but.
Well, but best practices work, right? So we know we need, so I'm going to say that with School Without Walls, there's a real intent to the curriculum and making sure that that curriculum is followed, because they do have project-based learning. So it's the application of what I'm learning. We know that's a best practice. How much are we using that in our other buildings? I feel that as we are updating our curriculum, we really are trying to go in that direction, to say if there's not application, training our principals to say, when you're doing walkthroughs, if you're not seeing this, this, and this, if you're not seeing students using calculators in those math classes, something's going on. Because kids should be using calculators all the time, they are applying what we're learning, right? It's a higher level of learning. They don't need to do those linear equations. How many of us can do linear equations in our head? Maybe my husband, he's a chemist, but I can't, right? So that calculator really matters, and we need to be able to continue to give access to students, and just not say we can't do that. We've taken a real effort this year, and in our content areas, to say, what's the impact of curriculum and student achievement? And if we're not engaging kids, there's no impact. So they've been working a lot on those pieces. We would hope that that happens. I can tell you, the network chiefs are sharing all the time best practices. But we do have to go further down in the data, as to the why.
But I certainly appreciate.
And attendance is killing us.
Yes.
So I always like to do presentations to say if we take, now, this isn't mine, but I like to say, let's take that twenty percent off and see how well those kids are getting, achieving, and it's going to be exactly like when I told you about iReady data, that when we took it off, you started to see more green. Attendance is killing us at the high schools. We need to get those kids, well, everywhere, but we need kids coming to school.
Well, thank you so much. The last thing I wanted to say is, thank you for providing students with multiple opportunities for success.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. President Simmons?
Thank you. Just a quick question. It may need to go in the log, and it's okay if you don't have an exact number, but I do recognize June is next month, and graduation is upon us, and this is leading me into the graduation thought. And I'm recognizing, we have a number of schools in the CSI receivership status across this district, and I'm thinking about a point where our graduation rates spiked a little bit, and reflectively, I think that was attributed to the relaxation of some of these standardized tests that we, you know, due to COVID and so on. And since then, and moving forward, what do you, do you predict, because I'm predicting we're going to see that be less than what we've seen. Do you have a number, or?
I look at data a lot. We've identified three hundred and fifty-seven students right now that will need summer school if they don't pass those Regents that they need. But in every school, I can tell you exactly the number of kids that right now we know will need summer school to be August grads. Trend data matches those pieces pre-COVID, in terms of, again, we have the Regents' requirement, right? We have the English III that sometimes holds us back, and now we're going to have the US History. They are new type of exams. We've been preparing them all year long. We've been on this whole culture of writing. We're not changing our instructional initiatives and deciding we have new ones for next year. We're keeping those, because we have to get really good at those. We have to be able to see more writing in schools. So we've been working on these numbers all along, and it's been my urgency to tell them, if we don't do something about this right now, we're gonna, we're gonna dip, and we don't want to dip.
Thank you.
So we're on it.
Dr. Strickland?
No, everything Dr. Ramos said was great. I just also want to provide more context. This is the first group post-COVID that do not have special appeals. So there will be situations where they must get sixty-five or fall into the safe harbor zone to actually earn the Regents' diploma. So, you know, this is, this is a plea out there to, one, get students in the schools. Our schools have been doing a fantastic job with initiating hall sweeps, making sure that students are in the buildings, getting into classes, and doing it on a consistent basis, but they have to get there. And again, of course, we don't want to see a dip, just as Dr. Ramos said, but that, that may, that may be likely across New York State, unfortunately.
Thank you. A quick question, and if you guys don't know this, we can talk about it later, but the Blue Ribbon Commission, what is the progress of that? Where are we in that process?
I believe.
Education Department, or our state monitor can answer that, answer that question. The Blue Ribbon Commission, where, where is the state at currently, when it comes to implementing that around the state?
The state's still working on the development of the plan. That information will be shared with the school districts for next year, so it is still work in progress, the document.
Okay.
That for 2027, right? The Blue Ribbon?
That's for first.
Twenty twenty-seven.
That's, that's also going to be a phased approach as well, in terms of graduation pathways. In terms of big five school districts, or school districts where, you know, there's high levels of English, English language learners, students, you know, in bilingual programs, but also students with disabilities, I would, I would think that the Commissioner of Education is likely to pick these large districts to be the first cohort to actually model these out. And just to let you know, we did have two individuals, two teachers on assignment in the Division of Teaching and Learning, that actually did gather, they held forums and did feedback sessions from parents and students to talk about the Blue Ribbon Commission, and we had to submit that information to BOCs, so that they can actually, we have, the Rochester community have input as to what it will look like for the Rochester City School District. So that has been done. And again, like I said, hopefully, you know, our district, you know, Buffalo, Syracuse, Albany, hopefully those are the school districts that sort of lead the way, because we know that our students, all students have multiple modalities, but our students are generally, we struggle with, you know, just this one way of showing our knowledge of subjects.
Yeah. I was on the Student Advisory Committee of the Blue Ribbon Commission, so I'm excited to see it implemented in Rochester. Commissioner Patterson?
Once again, I'm going to keep it short. Thank you again for your presentation. I don't want you to think I don't have questions for you, but in an effort to save time, interim Strickland is answering my questions up here, so.
Thank you.
I look forward to, you know, the iReady data, you know, during our summer retreat. Thank you.
Thank you. Our parent rep, Monica Graham, do you have any comments or questions?
Um, yes, thank you. So Dr. Ramos, you are on fuego tonight, so I appreciate that. This meeting is going along, you're efficient, the commissioners are hitting it, so I love it. So what I'd like to comment on is, thank you for providing that snapshot, because I don't think a lot of parents know the options that are out there for our scholars. I have personally with mine utilized a lot of those resources to make sure that he is on track. So thank you for highlighting that. So I want to let the parents know, those options are out there for our babies to stay on track and do those things. The district is providing that. So reach out to your counselor, your parent liaison, your principal, whoever you need, because it is there. So thank you for that. And thank you, Isaiah, or Commissioner Santiago, for bringing up the Blue Ribbon Commission. I was a part of those groups, and I think that having that particular structure for our scholars is amazing, because a lot of our scholars are bright. They just need a different way to do what we need them to do, and this will allow them that. So thank you all so much, and thank you for the presentations tonight, Dr. Ramos.
Thank you. Commissioner Lebron?
Yeah, I just want to echo everything that our parent rep just said, because I agree, especially with Dr. Ramos. Super on point tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Ramos. Can, as a board, can we just give a hand to Dr. Ramos?
Thank you. But you had Commissioner Griffin.
Say it. Oh, do we have an extra question? Any other questions? No?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you had a question. Thank you very much. I just want to leave one thought with you. We have evidence that our curriculum is impacting students that come to school. They're making it, they're passing the Regents. Remember, the new Regents, next generation, what used to be a sixty-five is now a sixty-nine. So you're going to see that dip of what kids need to do, and we need to get them all even further aligned. So if there's one campaign next year that I encourage you to continue to use as a board, is to get those babies to school, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Ramos. We appreciate you. So there are two reports on board docs, an attendance report, which I'm not sure if I'm the only one, but there is no document on there, and then also the receivership report, which is a quarterly report. The board gets a final report, but these are just quarterly updates. I wanted to give an opportunity to our interim superintendent and our state monitor to give updates, comments about these two reports.
Yes. First and foremost, I did inquire about the attendance report. This actually falls under Family and Community Engagement Department, but I was not able to get with the executive director. Regardless, there will be follow-up in that regard. As for section B, this is also, was provided to the Board of Education as soon as I sent them into New York State Education Department. We are required to post the quarterly receivership reports that our school buildings that are in receivership, they're supposed to complete on a quarterly basis. So you have the five reports, which in a sense are updates, and it's showing where these schools are, how far, or how they are being, how are they meeting the demonstrable improvement indicators that have been set for them. As we stated before, oftentimes, there's a misnomer that our receivership schools are the worst schools in the district. And these receivership schools, I know these elementary schools in particular, they have some of the higher scores, because the bar just keeps getting raised. However, there's subgroups that cause this to be, you know, to hurt schools actually get out of receivership. But it just really goes through an overall executive summary, which administrators provide us in plain language. And again, they show our, what their SMART goals are. They put information in the reports around their commitments, and they talk about their strategies. All Level One indicators are what New York State has assigned as areas that are in need of improvement for the schools. And Level Two indicators, there's a sort of a list of them that are provided to the schools where the school community actually selects the ones that they want. And at the end of the year, the goal is to get, they're weighted fifty-fifty. The end of the year, the goal is to get above sixty-seven percent in order to not be considered a school that has not met demonstrable progress. All of our schools this year, but one school, met demonstrable improvement. And then the one school that did not meet demonstrable improvement, I had to have a meeting with the Commissioner of Education around that school. She sent a letter, which I will just upload again in our weekly letter for you all to read, because it also comes with implications. She did ultimately say that the school, she's granting them demonstrable progress. It is the area where she has to weigh. Dr. Rosa has to weigh whether or not the school makes demonstrable progress, but she ultimately did say that we just have to put additional efforts and to make sure that we don't keep repeating the process. So, state monitor?
Thank you, Dr. Strickland. You're right about the process and about the school making demonstrable improvement. Like you said, there's only one school, and incoming superintendent, Dr. Rosa, and myself will be working with the principal in that school to develop a plan to continue to improve instruction in that building. If you look at the report, you can see that most of the rating is yellow or green, that there's no red. So that means that they're working very hard to meet those indicators from the state. We can see that the administrators are in the classroom doing walkthroughs and sharing that information with the teachers. Tomorrow, the state will be in, visiting two of those schools in receivership to go over the quarterly report and to see where they are, and the things that we need to continue to do as a district, and in the individual building to continue to increase student achievement. Dr. Ramos said three times, we need to get those babies to schools. When we look at the data, we can see the absenteeism and the chronic absenteeism is very high, especially at the high school level. So we need to make sure that our attendance team is putting some strategies in place, working with the families, working with the staff, to get the students in the school. If they are not attending school, they are not going to learn, we're not going to see the improvement. So it is important that we continue to work together to get the students in the school, and that we can continue to improve instruction, and to listen to Dr. Ramos, that we need to get those babies in the schools.
Thank, thank you to both Dr. Strickland and Dr. Alisea. Do you, we'll, we'll end the meeting there. If you guys have any questions or comments about this, you can put it on board docs. This is just a report. We do have, we get reports often, but if there's any additional question, it can be put on board docs. With that being said, can I get a motion to adjourn the ESA committee meeting?
Motion second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
And thank you. We'll take a two-minute recess before going into the special meeting. Folks can stretch their legs for a quick moment. And thank you for your patience. I'm Camille Simmons. You, we are now convening into our special meeting for this evening. Today is May 13th. I'd like to, pretty much, we're going to just jump in. We have a few resolutions that we're gonna consider this evening, including appointments, provisional appointments, terminations, resignations, and retirements. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to bundle a set of resolutions.
Motion.
And the resolutions specifically that I'm looking to bundle would be Resolution 664 through 669.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Griffin, seconded by Vice President Malloy. All in favor, or any discussion around the bundling, bundling? All in favor of the bundling 664 through 669?
Aye.
Aye.
Those resolutions are now bundling, bundled, excuse me. So entertaining a motion for Resolution 664 through 669.
A motion.
Motion by Commissioner Patterson, seconded by Commissioner Griffin. Those resolutions are open for discussion at this time. With no discussion, all in favor of Resolution 66...
My hands up, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't see you. Commissioner Lebron, go right ahead.
Yes, I just want to give two comments to Resolution 668, and I want to thank LaShara Evans for all of her service to our CSD. It like literally pains my heart to see you go. I just wanted to put on record that you're an amazing educator and principal and leader, and it's a big, huge loss for our CSD. Congratulations to the district that you're going to. And then I also, on 669, want to thank Linda Dunsmore, who's retiring, for all of her tireless work at, at the East Community. Linda's been there forever and a day. She was there when I worked at East. So I just want to thank Linda, and I wish her well in her retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lebron. Yes, Ms. Dunsmore is a household name, and Dr. Evans, I'm gonna call you doctor. You know how I always call somebody doctor. We thank you. We know that Tasha Potter is about to win something very special out there in Penfield, so congratulations. Any other discussion on these resolutions? With no further discussion, all in favor of Resolution 664 through 669?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolutions carry. The next resolution is Resolution 661, and this is an amendment. I wanted to just take a moment to unpack it so there's no questions. This is in regard to the Mental Health Ad-Hoc Committee. We, as a board, voted in support of this committee, which is still going to take place, and it's going to allow for a great opportunity to, for expert healthcare clinicians and mental health professionals to come together, as the purpose of the committee was stated. We also had an aggressive timeline because the objective was to get this in, I believe, by August, if, if I'm correct, Commissioner Santiago. And so with that, we're, we're looking at, we have gotten some folks who are joining into the Healthcare Ad-Hoc Committee, and we want to make sure we provide enough of a timeline where we can have robust representation. And so that timeline, we're going, we're asking to amend the timeline in this resolution. So again, nothing has changed. We just want to stretch out the timeline to allow for more committee members to become involved. Charisma, did I miss anything? And so with that explanation and hopefully clarity or understanding, I'd like to entertain a motion for Resolution 661.
Motion.
Second. Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Santiago, seconded by Commissioner Lebron. Open for Without further discussion, all in favor of Resolution 661?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Did, I didn't hear everyone. Did you capture all the votes? Okay. I'm gonna just entertain a motion. I, I want to make sure everyone here, me on the, up here. Entertaining a motion for Resolution 661? And we have the, the folks, all in favor of Resolution 661. I want to make sure that Charisma captures a vote respectfully.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye. Did you get them?
Aye.
Commissioner Griffin, did you want to enter yours?
Well, I, I'm going to just discuss something, because I just want to make it...
Well, I opened it for discussion, and there was no discussion, and so at this point, we're taking a vote.
Nay at this time.
Okay, nay. Okay, Charisma, count that in, and then the, the care, the motion carries at this time. The motion carries at this time. And thank you. Without further discussion, yo, did we do it? Oh, we beat the record. I thought it was going to be 7:30, it's 7:26. Have a good evening. That concludes the special meeting for this evening.
Motion for adjournment?
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Santiago. Motion for adjournment. Thank you. I'll give you the motion, Commissioner Santiago. Thank you for that, seconded by Commissioner, Vice President Malloy. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night.